The Town of Farmington. Respecting history, planning the future.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the Farmington Town Council meeting of May 22nd. And please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd like to ask everyone to stay standing so we can have just a moment of silence for the people in Santa Fe. At this time, I would ask for public comment. Anyone who would like to address the council, please come forward to the podium.
Hi, I'm Emily Kalini from 30 High Street. I just wanted to take a minute to share some of my thoughts after the bigger meeting last week, the joint town council and board of ed meeting. First of all, thank you to everybody for getting that process started again. I know it's a huge undertaking, but I also understand how necessary it is. It was great to see the beginning of the process be a joint meeting with lots of people coming to the table and sharing ideas and there being a chance for the community to give input. And so all of that was great. And speaking of lots of people giving input, I heard over and over again the talk of that the board of ed and the town council need to be on board together and involve the community. And I totally agree. But I also think, the more I've been kind of taking a crash course in local government in the last, I don't know, eight months maybe, I also think that Kathy Egan, the town manager and her staff should be included in that sentiment, that they play such a crucial and critical part in this type of a process and getting a project like this from the inception all the way to a referendum. And so I was just sitting there saying, and the town manager staff and all the staff, you need to be on board, right? It's such a joint process that I just struck me as something that they weren't mentioning that, but I think it's so important, that role in having everybody working together, as I know you all plan to do. I also wanted to share that I was disappointed to hear a couple of things come up. And I thought when we kept talking, or the group kept mentioning how we knew that the town didn't want the cost of the project. And I'm struggling to form my sentence correctly here, but I think, we know the town doesn't want $184 million high school. That's what I think the referendum, that's the question that got answered last time. But I feel it with so much misleading information and there was so much back and forth last time during the referendum, that I would urge everybody to keep their minds open going into this. Because yes, it was a two to one no vote, that's undeniable, but the voters, and hopefully the survey committee will take care of some of this, because the voters, I don't feel confident that all of them had the correct information, had the most factual information going into the referendum, going into the voting booth. And so to draw direct and distinct conclusions from something that featured such misleading information, I think would be a mistake. And so I would urge you all to keep your minds open when you're thinking about it. And not only that, but that the price tag was not the only reason for no vote, that there was a wide variety of reasons that people voted no. And Mr. Sanson, when you were talking about renovations being considered, I wanted to remind everyone of a group of people who thought renovations were dangerous, they thought that was too disruptive for the students to be in the building when that was being done. And I remember a video response with Farmington released showing kids in hard hats and saying that this was unacceptable in our town. And I know it was done for effect, but there were definitely people who latched on to that, that renovation has its own problems. It might be cheaper, but it comes with other costs. And so as you're starting a process, I think that it would be a mistake to close off any option before we've really gotten a chance to fully vet and consider them. And so you have to keep your minds open. I know that there's a lot of challenges when you're looking at the project. So I think outside the box thinking and all of those new ideas are really going to be essential. And so I urge everyone to wait and hear what these committees bring back before we start already pushing towards a certain direction. I think that would be a mistake.
Thank you.
Good evening. Tim Kelly, 62 Westview. I would like to request that our Westwoods Golf Course be put up for review as part of the strategic plan priority list. When I look at the punch list of capital expenditures and infrastructure projects that the council would like to undertake, it's abundantly clear that it'll be more and more difficult to place that increased burden on the residential taxpayers of Farmington. And I think we all understand the brunt of the debt service payments for the new wastewater plant really haven't hit yet. Our municipal golf course covers significant acreage and location that can be a prime site for commercial office park with room for open space as well. It's the opportunity to uplift our taxable grant list. And in terms of support we need to offer, our newest fire station at southwest corner sitting right there today. So as we look at town investments and trade offs going forward, I think we should examine whether Farmington needs to be in the golf course business. There are questions to be raised. I know in recent years, perhaps decades, Westwoods has lost money in its annual budget. I don't know how many season memberships they have now, but again, this needs to be looked at. How many of those are town residents? How many are out of town memberships? Staffing and specialized equipment costs are certainly not going to go down in the future. Now, I like to play some golf and Westwood is a nice little course. There are probably people in town or even my neighbors who would like to throw a tomato at them now. As I look around at greater Farmington, would we really be denying anybody the opportunity to play golf if Westwoods wasn't there? So all I'm asking is that you make a strategic priority to put it up for review and give this question some thoughtful analysis. And I appreciate the thought process going forward. By the way, I have no personal or business interest in any of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Marie Lavendier on 143 Main Street. First of all, I want to thank you for your service and all your good intentions. And let you know that I grew up in Farmington. We moved here when I was, back in 1958. And it's a great town. Moved away for a while, lived in Unionville, lived in Hartford, but we came back when our kids were born because we wanted them to grow up in this town. So given that, as a person who lives on Main Street, I have been very frustrated lately and I want to express some of that. So the Route 4 construction project, you know, I've talked with Nancy, I've talked with Rose about the development there. It's so frustrating to live in the village right now on Main Street. And from what I can see, and I don't know behind the scenes, it's a project that doesn't seem to have improved much. And now I know it was a project that was born 20 years ago or decades ago with the state. And the question I have to ask is, where was the communication between the town and the state over those 20 years? Because it just, the traffic situation has gotten worse. It doesn't seem to be improving anything. And from what I can see, the same amount of traffic is going to be flowing through and even probably more congested than ever. But I do not know, as I said, I don't know everything. I hope I'm wrong. So I have to ask why we're doing this? Is it for improving traffic flow? Is it for economic development? I mean, all these projects going on. We have the best mill rate in the state, so we don't really, you know, why do we have to promote more economic development? But the thing that I'm most concerned about right now is the milling and paving of Main Street. So I found out about this. Why weren't we notified being on Main Street? You know, I went on the webpage. There's really no information about it. It doesn't really have a start date. It's really going to impact and disrupt our lives. It may. So we would like more information on that. And to our knowledge and from what we can see, Main Street doesn't really have to be paved and milled. It's pretty good, except maybe there's a few areas. What needs to be worked on are the sidewalks in the village. They're horrible. I've fallen, friends have fallen. And that needs to be looked at. And speaking of the milling project and the paving project, I did go on the webpage. I couldn't find anything. It is a real effort to get out of town every morning, living on Main Street and getting back to my house. I use my GPS. It would be really nice though to have on the webpage, on the homepage, alerts for these different, you know, projects going on. Okay, is High Street going to be closed today? Is Garden Street going to be the entrance to Garden Street? Main Street? You know, what's going on? I tried to register with Evergreen a few times and I just can't seem to do it. There's got to be some way to get these alerts about these projects so we can, you know, make arrangements for our day. Some other ideas or suggestions?
And we usually speak for five minutes, so.
Okay. So town has to communicate with the state. We can't control what the state does, but the town has to have meaningful input with the state. Notice, I noticed on the goals from 2016 to 2018, the goals for Farmington is to communicate with the state quarterly. That's good. Who's communicating with the state on all these projects? That's what we're wondering. Another suggestion, a sidewalk and a bike trail from the village to Unionville. That would be a nice project.
All right.
Thank you.
And just so everybody knows, when we have public comments, generally five minutes a person. But we don't answer the questions from the seats up here, but we do take everything down that you've asked questions about. So we will make sure that you get information back from the questions you're asked, absolutely. But it's important for everybody to know that and that we're not just sitting up here and not responding in that manner. So you will definitely get information back. Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Okay. Thank you. Kathy. Oh, Bruce.
Okay. I move to consider to take action on the attached Town of Farmington Strategic Plan/Town Manager Goals. Second.
Kathy. But I thought it would be okay that maybe I sit down there with Erica and face you and then we could work through it that way?
Kind of a point of, I don't know, order question. Right. So do we need to vote on, that's the motion, move to vote on the motion. Need to call?
Yes. So everyone a favor in discuss of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Okay.
So, good evening. Kathy, Erica's going to help me. We have the goals on the screen. As you can see in the audience, I have most of the direct reports are here. So if we have any questions or want to include them in the discussion, they're here to join in. That's why they're available tonight. I left on everyone's places updated goals. And I thought what we could do is work off of that. Over the weekend and last week, I received what I'm calling topics for consideration.
Can you pull the mic closer to you, Kathy?
I included the topics of consideration and I worked off and I started with a new document. So I thought if we could just start working off this document and I go through it line by line, and then I think we'd all be on the same page. Does that work for everyone? Okay. So this is our strategic plan document. And it has our goals up on the top. It has desired outcomes, deliverables, and then specific goals on the right hand side. The desired outcomes and deliverables are considered more of the work plan of the town. I am hopeful that any type of goal or specific thing that you wanted to talk about should be able to fit into the plan as it exists. So why don't we just start on page one? And also with your color chart, I gave everyone a color chart at your poses. Red is delete, green is new goals and topics of consideration, blue is modifications or moving to department goals, and purple is no change. So if we started at the top of page one, our goal is transportation and land. And if you can see in the blue, I did some modifications on that based on what I call topic four, which is transportations, which I received from your list of transportation items and topics. So that's how I modified that. I took that right from your document and I think I left everyone in their places and it was also in the agenda packet. So it was called, topic four was transportation, improving our infrastructure to allow for better traffic moving through town and allowing for alternative means of transportation, biking, walking, but also understanding the desire to maintain the town's historic roots and charms. So portions of that, I put right into the overall goal of transportation and land. I thought that's where it could fit in. If you keep on moving down on page one, I added a new topic for consideration and that's in green and it was called consideration of historic properties and including controlling sprawl to preserve Farmington historic roots. This came from per topic one on your list of sustainable development. This, I think we need to have some more discussion about, about what you're looking for in particular. But I thought maybe there could be a committee and things of that could be considered. So this is kind of broad based for discussion. So Nancy, do you want to have discussion now or kind of just work through some of them?
Well, why don't we, if anyone has any comments now with historic, because you've placed them in certain, all of these have been placed within the goals. Comments on this placement or wording?
I don't so much on the context or on the placement or wording, but what I do want to comment on is, I know these are things, I know Bruce sent them to you, but I wrote them, so. So based on conversations that I've been having with town council and around town and this came up a lot in what I'm hearing from residences, we're big fan of Farmington. We really like its historic charm and, oh yeah, we also like the businesses that are here because it keeps our tax rate low and we like this and we like that and we don't like the. So there's just a lot of questions that I'm getting about how do we balance economic development with, which I think is a critical component of maintaining Farmington, but how do we balance it with the historic nature? Historic charm is the phrase that often gets used, but how do we balance those issues together? And that's why I included it as part of sustainable development. I was trying to synthesize a lot of conversations that I've had.
Other kind of background. Is there, is there a specific, we were talking about specific, how many is our deliverable, but we have the deliverables here. Is there a specific outcome or thought that you, of an expectation or not necessarily just an idea?
I don't necessarily have a clear outcome. I was hoping we could talk about that further, about what the best thing is. I do think, I know at the beginning, maybe in January, we talked about whether or not the gateway committee needed to be revised and to include other concepts. And I don't know if Kathy mentioned it, if that, I don't know if that's the way to go, but that might be a way to balance some of the competing needs.
Kathy, I think what you said and what you just articulated, I think definitely we're feeling a pinch right now about balance because there is, I mean, it's great with all the economic development that's going on, but the balance of the historic side of things. And so I think that maybe when we go on, there's a couple of other goals that maybe some of that could fit into. And if not, we could track back to it without getting like an action item or what we need. But there's been definitely some talk about, you know, again, how do you preserve the historic charm? Is there different action items that we could do? And there are a lot of different things that could be possibilities. But also later on, we have maybe a Farmington Center group and that's in the historic area. And maybe some of that, instead of taking it as such a large project, maybe have it in smaller sections in the goals. So I think if we track back to it at the, you know, at the end or as we go along, if we can see if what you're talking about is some of these other goals that we could make sure that would fit action items in that do do that balance. You know what I'm saying? Is that in some of these other goals, we can set a specific action item that does, has a balance or that we, or we have some kind of committee later on that may be studying it as a whole.
I think that makes sense. I think in my mind, a lot of, under sustainable development, I think a lot of these issues have played across other goals. Because that's how it's sustainable, is that you continue to think about it and everything that you.
Right. Okay. Go ahead. Oh, Edward, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Yeah, I think there definitely needs to be a balance with our historic roots and economic development. I think there can also be a synergy, you know, with all the historic places we have, the Stanley Whitman House, the Freedom Trail. You know, I don't know if this is the right place for it, but maybe somewhere in our strategic plan, we can have something about, you know, promoting local tourism of our, you know, historic landmarks here in Farmington. And that's something that, you know, helps preserve our historic roots, but also brings people, tourists into Farmington that are also going to spend money at our local businesses. So I think there's a synergy that can be found there as well.
And that could be something, and again, when we move on to economic development and again, like an action item, that possibly it could fit in this goal or possibly it could fit in Rose's goal and something just like that. You said that, I think that we probably maybe have something in here about promoting tourism, but if we had an action item, whether it was here in this goal or in the economic development goal that would start that. And again, it still goes back to what Patty says, I think there is a match that we'd be able to do. So I'm just going to make a note of that. And so when we get later on, and Erica will, we'll see if it's maybe can fit in, in the economic development.
Okay. Okay. Next, existing goal, red.
Okay. So still on page one, delete goal one, that was complete. And then delete goal two, and instead take a, have a new goal, which is now on page two. And I have a new goal is that recommending a Farmington Center Committee and to appoint a Farmington Center Committee. On this goal, my thoughts on that is that one of the things that we really have to take on very quickly is whether or not the town, what we're going to do with the Parsons piece of property. And that's something that is going to happen sooner rather than later. And I also thought with this goal, we could talk about having a charge of it that also has to do with the architecture. We have money in the budget that we have for tree lined streets. We just got, what are we going to do with the green? Not, it's not our green, but do we have thoughts of what we want, what it to look like? And I think all of that could fit into this Farmington Center group. And I envision this, we've been working on the charge because it's something that, you know, the state is going to want to know soon whether or not we're going to take this property, if we want to own it or not. And we're going to need to vet it. But I think this is going to be a goal that we're going to need numerous town council people on it because, and a big committee of residents and historic people and a lot of different people, business community people. And so I would put this as something that I would think is going to be a top priority for the council in the short term. So that would be my recommendation on that on page two.
Comments? Go ahead.
Couple of questions first. What are we looking at timeframe as far as the property?
Well, the state is going to finish this project in the next probably 30 days and but the state, as you.
Everyone listen to that just a second.
As you know, the state does not move very quickly. And so there's appraisals that have to be done. There's certain things that, you know, will take some time. I haven't been informed that we're under the gun like in the next two weeks type of thing. But I would say we're going to act, we're going to need to have some kind of consensus whether or not we're going to, that it is our intent to take it, I would say, over the summer months.
Question, Bruce?
Yeah. Thank you, Kathy. So this particular recommendation of creating this Farmington Center Committee, I know one of the action items here, you have the Parson acquisition and other, some examples of other, would they be, and I know you talked about the architectural review, maybe the park, but would this committee also kind of work with traffic reviews or understanding of that? Or do you think that, you don't know yet because that committee needs to be formed and maybe they would define what that is?
Exactly. I think that is with development and things like that would absolutely bring traffic into it. I, how I'm, we're still working on the charge of this committee, but I think it's recommendations just to get the committee started. But I think that this is going to be a very large charge. And I think that, you know, my experience is that you're taking it in phases, is that, you know, we have to make, we have to look at what we have to make a decision about first. And the decision is, is that do we want ownership or not? Do we want control? I think in the meantime, there's a lot of things that you've just talked about, about architecture, the traffic, some different things, what we're going to do, the plantings, what do we want it to look like? Those types of things that the committee can be working on. And then come back with like phase two of the charge. What's the next part of it? And so I think, you know, it's not unusual for us to have numerous phases in these types of committees. And I think that part of the committee's job is going to be to look at what they should be looking at. And just getting a group of people together from that area with the business owners and the historic people and the council. So I'm thinking that this is something that we're going to just have getting set up if this all goes well. Probably we're looking at a June, at the June Town Council meeting, just to start getting people and things like that. Because like I said, it's the, the driving factor is taking that property or not.
Sure. Thank you.
You see, John?
And if we did not take the property, do we have any clue what the state would be doing with it?
Yeah, they're going to sell it, I would say.
So it could be, if we don't take the property and take control of it, it can be just about anything that zoning prevents.
Yes. It's zoned, the Farmington Village Center, I think is the zone. And so again, we would still have control, meaning we, the town, the TPZ would have control of it, but I think. but I think that if, if the town wants to kind of, we could go out for RFPs to see what kind of development is out there, and then we'd always have to be recommending that to the TPZ. The TPZ is always going to be the land body on the property, but we could look at it, we could take our time, once you owned it, we could work with developers, there's, it can be very complex of different things that we can do, so, but the first, like, when I've been working in my head, has been thinking, you know, really, we have to make a decision about, you know, do we want control or not? And if we do want control, how are we going to get this piece of property? And it's probably going to be by a referendum vote, and so then how do you market that to the community? And so that's, I think, what this committee is going to be first charged with, those types of things. But why I say it's going to be a big committee is because I think in the meantime, you want to have the landscaping done, you want to have the pocket parks done, you want, so you want some, we need some guidance on that. So I, like I said, I really feel this is a big goal that's going to be a large time commitment.
And is there, just one, is there any idea how much the state, has there been any number thrown out there about what they think it's worth?
Do we have any idea on that?
Well, usually our commercial property is approximately $300,000 per acre, so, and that's just an approximate estimate, we never know what, you know, it's what the market will bear, so that's almost three acres there, and there is a very high visibility because there's 28,000 cars a day, so I would...
So you're talking a million dollars?
Yeah.
Just ballpark, yeah.
Give or take.
Yeah. Not quoting on that, just an idea. Good, thanks. Edward.
I had the same question.
Oh, sorry. Paul.
I like the idea of this committee, would it be like a lot of other committees where they basically give all their data back to the council, and then the council...
Yeah, this would definitely, all these committees would be ad hoc committees that would be making recommendations to the town council.
Other questions? Yes, Bruce?
Yeah, just expanding on, because the Farmington Center Committee, and I know it used to be called, or at one time there was a committee called the Gateway Committee, and during my conversations throughout the community, people have said there's multiple different entry points to the gateway. Do we envision that perhaps maybe this committee also looking at that as well, or is that maybe two, three years down the road?
I, I mean, ideally, I, I would say that that could be something, but I just think realistically, with the workload and what the priority is, I think the committee's going to really just focus on that, but I think when it's established, it could look at it, and if it matches and it works well, I, I mean, I think that all of that really has to be hammered out.
Sure. Okay.
Other questions? CJ.
Just sort of following up on what Bruce had to say, I think all those other questions have to be addressed, but I think to your point, Kathy, the key is deciding are we going to acquire it or not, and getting that committee moving quickly, and having that be a specific charge of that committee would seem to be our best move. On the surface, I would think it makes much more sense for us to have control over a property like that, rather than to have the state make decisions on who they want to sell it to and how they deal with it. It is our gateway, the way people come into town, how they enter town. Anyone who went to any of the numerous charrettes on the Gateway Committee saw the town and the public had a lot of ideas on how they'd like to see the entrance to town, and those meetings had to do with the whole section of town there. I think that's a whole nother discussion, how we deal with everything down there, from there to the bridge and everything in between, but it sounds like this committee should be focused on, do we want to acquire this property, and if so, how we get in those negotiations and how we can make it to the best of our abilities.
Other?
Would we be working on this in land acquisition in parallel to this committee, or this would go through this committee first, then get referred to land acquisition?
I wouldn't think it would go to land acquisition.
Oh, it wouldn't go to us at all?
The land acquisition charges for municipal open space or recreational use, so if the Parsons property is not going to be one of those three...
And we wouldn't touch it.
Okay. Yes.
So the Gateway Committee, when was the last meeting of that, when did that kind of fall away or not?
We last met February of 2017, when we received the full report. We tried meeting after that, but we didn't get a forum, and so we pretty much finished with the final study of the town, of the town center.
I'm just wondering how we see the work that was completed and what came out of that committee being this, that we just...
Yep, well, Rose, maybe you can speak to that?
Sure. So that committee had a charge of looking at the different gateways and the different areas in town that had development potential or opportunity. So the first one that was looked at was the Farmington Center, primarily because there was the Route Four project that was going through it, and also because there was a lot of possibility for change in that area, because there's so much of those parcels are privately owned. So because of that, we, do you want to...
Hey, Rose, there you go. Yes. We want to make sure the public hears this too. Just to refresh people while you're walking up there, we had hundreds of people involved in this gateway, as a couple people mentioned, over a span of a number of days, but then, and in addition, when you had your gateway meetings, there were a number of people coming all, all the time, so there are a lot of people involved and a lot of people that had voices, and it's a big concern of people in the, in the community, so.
Right, so what this committee was charged to do is to really look at areas of town that had the potential for some type of development, or that had the potential for change, and the first area that was decided to look at was the village area, and that was primarily because of the Route Four project, we felt there was going to be a lot of change in that area, and also there are a number of private parcels that it looks like they are going to be going up for sale, and we thought it was imperative that we really look at that area and understand the existing conditions in that area, and understand what should happen in that area. So since that was our first charge, one of the first things we did was really try to engage the community, and we did so by doing the charrettes. And in, during those charrettes, we hired a consultant to help facilitate, we gathered everybody's information, and those consultants then came up with our Farmington study, Center Study, and what that really was, was a compilation of everybody's comments, and really looking at that area, what were some of the visions for that area, what exactly were the existing conditions, what were some of the strengths and the threats and the opportunities, and so all of that was undocumented in the Farmington Center Study. Then we had another community meeting in the fall of that year, just to make sure that was presented, and then we gathered more comments from that meeting. So at that point then, we hired a consultant, BL Companies, to now looking at what the Farmington Center report told them, would they then go on and do a market study, a traffic study, and really start to put together what can happen in that area, primarily what can happen in perhaps Parsons, taking together not only the comments that were given to us by the charrettes, but also then united them with the market study, the traffic study, and all the other things that, that are happening because of the changes primarily with the baggage road. So with all of that, they did give us a final report, and that was the last time the Gateway Committee met, and during that last meeting, the consultants gave us their, their presentation, and we had public comment, and this room was filled, so they were, you know, close to, you know, capacity, so, and, and through that process too, we did an inventory of sites, we made sure we understood what, what different historical structures were there, what, which one of them, you know, needed to be protected, and then we also had the community be engaged by choosing, they were given a vast choices of different downtown areas throughout the state, and they then were able to vote on it and say what different architectural design elements appealed to them. So the consultants took all that information and then came up with a plan. So that last plan is not really a plan as to what's going to happen in that area, it's really just a guiding document, so we knew, what we wanted to do is to be prepared, so when developers come in and they see these different properties that are for sale, that there's some type of a document that tells them, this is what this community likes, this is what it doesn't like, these are some of the architectural design guidelines, and then they even gave a proposal of what could happen there, but never at all was it intended to, to be a good document that says that's what's going to happen. It was just a guiding document, trying to document all the different comments that we received. So that was what was charged and what was accomplished.
And I think one of the things that was just, Rose just didn't talk about, was a lot of the recommendations that came from the gateway was then incorporated into the town planning and zoning, their regulations, their plan of conservation and development, they re-zoned, all based on the different things that the Gateway Committee had been making recommendations about. And the other thing, what really started the whole thing was, again, a thought that instead of being reactive, we were being proactive to what the development would be, so that when we would have some idea as a community of what you wanted these parcels to look like, so instead of having each area, well, a development would come in and look like this, instead it was more of a comprehensive plan, still with the understanding that all these things have to go to the TPZ, and the TPZ is the ultimate person, that, the ultimate body that decides based on our zoning regulations.
Bruce?
Rose, just to clarify, so, I know that you said the last time this committee, they gave their last report and they really couldn't form another meeting because they couldn't get informed, that was back in February of 2017, so the, really, the last time they really met in front of the public forum was about 14, 15 months ago, about a year, a little over a year?
I, I believe so, yes.
But one thing, I think that has to be clear too, is that the gateway portion was of Farmington Village was complete, so that was complete 14 months ago. What the Gateway Committee was going to meet on was the other gateways in the community, and the reason why we couldn't meet, what kept on getting us bogged down, was that it was very important to the gateway, and it's also with legal issues, is that things, other gateways that were coming up, the town planning and zoning were taking those issues on, so we can't be as a gateway talking about a development that was actually being looked on at the TPZ level. So that's why the meetings kept on ending, because the gateway was done, they had done their work for the gate, Village, things were incorporated in the conservation plan, but the next one was we were going to look at Five Corners, and we were going to start doing Five Corners, the next thing, Five Corners went to the TPZ, it had a development. Our group couldn't have public hearings and couldn't do that, so really, that's why that group was really, hadn't started meeting, and the, I think its overall mission at the very beginning was complete, and that's why I think that this Farmington Village, and then if, again, the Farmington Village, or if we still want to have another type of gateway type of committee, we can do that, but I think that would be a separate type of committee.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Okay. We'll keep going. Good. All right, so we are on page two. Goal, goal three is making a modification. This is for our state projects, and as we've heard and we've discussed a lot, is that the town has had a tremendous, tremendous amount of state projects going on in the town over the last five, six years. We've had our baggage road project, which was the first phase of the Route Four project, we've had our Rails to Trails project, we've had a New Britain Avenue project, we've had a Route Four corridor project, we've had a South Road project, and that was just in the two years, the other ones have been deleted off. The good news is, is that most of these projects were paid for by grants from, that, that we had applied for, just for instance, the trail that we just went to the opening for, that was supported by the state of Connecticut without any taxpayer dollars, local taxpayer dollars. We do have two projects that are significant coming up. The first one is the New Britain Avenue project, that project is going out to bid, and that project's going to start work in the fall, that's going to be a considerable traffic and project out there, and the next one is, which, again, the Route 10 paving project, that project, as we had someone speak tonight, has been the state, today, we just went to a meeting with 25 state people, and we talked about the project, one of the things that was, has been being debated, which we spoke very strongly about today, was that they wanted to do the project during the day, and we have said that we can't accept that, that it has to be done at night. They're just working out of the details of that project, they are, the state is going to be doing notifications on it, the town will, as we usually do, will be sending letters to all the neighbors. This goes from the CBS on Route 10 all the way to the Avon border, so it's a large, large paving project. We, I think it's supposed to, Russ, it's 7:00 PM, that they start at night?
We recommend seven to six.
Seven to 6:00 AM? And it will take how long?
About a month.
Okay. About a month. One of the things that, it's, it's a difficult situation, is that obviously it's very, very difficult to shut down Route 10 during the day, one lane and shutting it down, but at night, the problem is, is that it's noisy, and so it's, the, the only good part is, is that you don't, they don't stay in front of a person's house for any real length of time, they're moving along, and it takes a month to do that, but there's going to be quite a bit of correspondence with it. We were insistent that they could not start the project until they got off this Road, Route Four project, and what has happened, and again, it's talking about communication, we try, you know, we do communicate with the state, Russ is on contact with the state every day, but there's, there's traffic divisions, there's construction divisions, there's Route, Route Four project people. Just recently, what has happened when the state has been prepping for the Route 10 project, they don't tell us they're coming out, and it's another division in a big organization, and they shut down a street or a park when the middle of a Route Four project's going on. So it's really, again, I will say that we do communicate and really try hard to use some common sense approach, but they are huge projects that are taking place with a tremendous amount of traffic on the roads, and hopefully, our whole philosophy right now is just to have them finish the Route Four project, we're really coming to the end of it right now, and the Route 10 to do that at night, and just let the, you know, over the summer, the traffic's usually a little bit quieter, I think the nighttime will be better, but it is going to be a difficult project, and also, I'll let you know that the, the New Britain Avenue project's going to be very difficult too. The New Britain Avenue project is, you know, it's, there's a ton of utility work that has to be done, and we have been told that this is not going to be an easy project, and also just the fact that the level of traffic in Unionville, and we're still working out the details of the bidding and how that's going to work out too, but the roads, this, you know, we're trying to get their, state is trying to get their road projects done, and I think that when the Unionville project's done, you're going to see a substantial change in the traffic patterns, you're going to have the turn lane, I think that's going to be very beneficial to the traffic. We do feel that the Route Four project, when it is done, it will help the flow of traffic significantly, and I think we have to just live with the Route Four for a bit and see how it works, and, and then we can evaluate from there. But it was never meant to stop the traffic on Route Four, it's meant for the flow of traffic, and with accidents and that, but I think we just have to get it finished, and then we can live, see how it goes. There's also been quite a bit of issues happening now with the contractors out there, today was a good example of it, is that when the contracts are out there, there's things happen with the lights, and the lights get messed up, and then when the lights get messed up, it, it really, if it's, if it gets messed up for just a couple of cycles of traffic, it really messes up the, the traffic pattern, but I think the good news is, is that we're on our way to finish. The town, like I said, I was at a meeting today with 25 state people, all DOT, contractors, Frontier, everyone playing, saying how important it is for us that we can't do these projects at, during the day, and that we have to notify the residents, we have to do, the state has to do, take a part in, in this communication, and it's, it is very, very difficult to work and do this with them. How quickly can you actually get information out? Like, say they call in the morning and say, okay, we're going to shut this down or do this. How soon can you get that, I mean, you can get it out on Everbridge, I suppose?
Yeah, yeah, we can. We can get it done, but, you know, a lot of times, usually when it's very, when, recently when things have gone bad out there, it's because of very particular things, meaning that they came out when they didn't tell us they were coming out and shut down a road, they, the lights got changed.
They, the lights got changed up and that no one, you know, the lights were messed up and we didn't know the lights were messed up. Something happened where they were moving lanes for half a day and they, you know, we knew it was going to happen, but it's just, it's, there's, it's going to have traffic. It's going to have traffic. And it's, as you know, right now, really, they're at the, very much at the end, but you're, you know, the barriers are out, it's one lane and going, it's a difficult situation. It's a difficult situation.
And do you know how long the New Britain Avenue project, you said it would start in the fall? Is there any idea how, or ten?
About two years.
Two years? And the, but the paving of Route 10, you said it'd be one month?
Correct.
And that's going to start after they're through with Route 4?
Yeah, they're looking to start in the beginning of June.
In the beginning of June?
June 4th.
Well, that's good to hear that the Route 4 project will be done by then. I hope so. Questions? Patty?
I think Bruce was, oh, go ahead.
Ladies could go first.
Not here.
My question is about the Route 10 milling and paving. And I'm just thinking about public safety and I know that the fire department is right there. Do we know if that potentially, and I'm thankful to hear that it's going to happen at nighttime, I know people may not like that because it's going to be at nighttime, but I think about public safety and how that potentially could impact. Because I know those fire trucks go out daily. So do we know if any impact to that would happen or is there contingency plans out there?
As far as the traffic patterns, usually there's police officers or flaggers there since the volunteers are responding with their lights. It's usually an indication it's emergency and they're pretty good about stopping traffic and letting the volunteers respond to the firehouse. Really good about working on the traffic pattern, stopping traffic and getting it moving so the guys can get to the firehouse. So I haven't seen any issues or heard of any issues currently with the destruction going on now, so.
I hope there's no issues. I just know right now that they're changing those, the storm drains and traffic. And this is during the daytime, so nighttime is going to be completely different, that the traffic could back up and I would say at least 30 cars. I could just, it would just kind of concern me if it's backed up 30 cars up to the fire department and you guys have to go out and how do you move all those cars? So I just want to make sure that that's an awareness, to make sure that they're not backed up to the fire department, that the trucks can get out if there is an emergency or we have a contingency plan from another station.
Good point, Bruce, thanks.
I was going to the communication from the state.
Yeah.
I work against, I work opposite the state on a regular basis, so I'm aware that it's a big entity and it's difficult to get information from them sometimes. But it is a significant bone of contention of anyone I talk to about the lack of communication and the difficulty in getting information and every time. And I can say, well, that's a state word project, the town's communicating with this, they don't care. So how can we improve communication that goes out to residents? How can we address, how can we ensure that there is better communication going out to residents? And the Everbridge notifications, for example, I get notifications when a road on the other side of town is closed, but I've been in my own neighborhood and there's a road there closed and I didn't get a notification. That's, so I'm trying to figure out how we can get more notices out to people on a timely basis without cluttering up their mailboxes in a way that they then choose to ignore everything.
Right.
There is a balance. And I was, I did flip through what you provided earlier and I noticed there's a new ad hoc committee on transparency. So I think some of this could fit into there as well. But I would like to figure out how we can continue to work well with the state. I appreciate that you're going to the meetings with the state and that there is this open dialogue, but I think we need more, not maybe instantaneous, but more timely information when there's things that impact our residents.
Yeah, it, I definitely understand. It's a, definitely a bone of contention of just the instant communication, but how, how fast things move, you know, when a light goes out or when the state comes out and then when they're going to do it. And really trying to coordinate their projects when it's their projects. And it's, it's difficult and Russ and his staff, it's, you know, there's only so much time in the day to become their full-time person for these projects. And that's basically what it has become. It's that, you know, and I'm not, I'm thinking that we definitely can do, have better ways of maybe communicating, but what is going, especially right now when the traffic is what it is, you don't, it's, oh, right now, the traffic in the village is going to be bad every day until this project ends. And, you know, that's basically how it, how it's going to be. But I do think that we can do a better job and maybe fit it in somewhere else or try to have a better plan of what the communication is. But it's, I do struggle though, when it's an entity that I can't control, you know, you know, it's, when it's our own projects and this and that, I can say, this is what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. With the state, it's a lot more difficult to do that. But I do think that we can try to see if there's some kind of thing that we can work out with them and, you know, talk about it in some of this communications goal.
Yeah, I think that would be very helpful. I mean, I know, sitting on town council the past five months, I've gotten a lot more information about the state projects than I have in the previous years that I've lived in town. And I don't know, I honestly don't know the best way to get the information out, but I know when I want an information, now seeing these, I started clicking through multiple links on the website and after I think about five or six clicks on the town's website, I found information about state projects and maybe there's a faster way to get to it. But I do think that there needs to be more, it needs to be easier to access and it needs to be in a method that people can quickly get there and know that it exists. And frankly, there are a lot of people that complain on Facebook and one option maybe is to figure out how this, how the town can post information in those social media types. As great as Explore Farmington is, I think it's still growing and there are more people using other forms of social media as well.
Other question.
Yeah, Kathy, going back to the Route 4 project that's finishing up. So we did hear, you know, one resident during the public comment portion, you know, having some concerns about that project. And I know there's other residents that also have concerns about what the, what the outcome's going to be. And I do agree with you that we have to kind of let it at this point, you know, be completed and see, you know, see how, what it looks like. But I'm wondering, does the state DOT have any plan for a traffic study once the project is completed so that we have quantitative data to know truly if there's a benefit or if it's worse or if it's about the same? Because without some sort of, you know, you know, study where they, you know, they put the devices out in the road that count the cars that go by, you know, one person's going to say it's better, one person's going to say it's worse. So I'm wondering, have you heard anything from the state DOT on that?
They have not said that they would be doing that. We did though, do a traffic study, you know, recently in the village, a couple of years ago, to try to see what the traffic is on some of the other side roads, on Main Street, on High Street and some different things. The state does have data. That is something that we could look at to see what the difference would be. You know, you know, that wouldn't be that difficult. I don't know if the state would do it, but we could always do some kind of traffic study too. But we could request it or, you know, see what, you know, after everything is all said and done.
Yes, I was wondering if maybe we put that as another modification to a request from the state DOT that they do do a traffic study on Route 4 once the project's complete.
Yep, I can break that down and we can figure out how we can, see if we can get it in.
CJ?
I'm sure it's, this is more of a general thought and comment, I think, for the council to consider. I noticed there are a number of crossover items here that are listed in numerous categories. And some of the comments we're bringing up here, and Kathy has mentioned, might be in different areas as well. In the interest of trying to be more efficient in our meeting, might it be an idea to let the town manager go through the entire 16 pages and then we go back and ask questions? Keeping in mind, we've just finished two pages in two hours, which means we have another 14 hours of a meeting here. So if that's something that might work.
One hour.
One hour.
Yeah, sure. Excuse me. We'll have seven more hours.
It felt like two hours.
These are the, I will, these are probably the most difficult ones, I would say, but I do think.
Sure, go ahead, Kathy.
Okay. So, page two. So we'd be requesting to modify existing Goal 3 and delete Goal 4 because it's complete. That is having an extra turning lane on Route 4 and Route 10. If we go on to page three, Goal 5, I'm recommending no, no change. Again, this would be something that we've studied. You're not going to really fix the traffic in Farmington at all unless you probably have another bridge in town. And so that's something that we've continually tried to look at. We've been doing different avenues. We have maybe a spot where I could go, but as you know, over the last year, the state really has, the funding has dried up. But something that Russ and I continue to work on that could stay on the goals and see if we can move that forward for design and some different things, if there was maybe some emergency management. Because Bruce, to your point, it's not just at the firehouse there, it's all over town where the traffic is gridlocked, that if you could, if there was grant funding available through like the emergency management grants and federal funding to build another bridge, homeland security, that type of thing. Goal, let's see where I am. Goal six, I wrote here that I'd say modifying our bike committee, which would include, I think that the charge and some of what Goal 7 could be in the, the charge of the bike committee and modifying the committee charge to include the existing Goal 7 and include review walkability and bicycle connectivity, which is one of the goals that you talked about. I think it could fit in there somewhere in the bike committee. And my thought with that is the bike committee, which I'll say the same thing when we get to the green committee, what my thought was is that I think these are two really very good goals and that maybe each of the committees could work on what their action plan would be and then come back to the council on what the action plan would be in the future. Instead of trying to come up with what their charges would be, I think that the groups themselves, been a long-established groups, that they could come back and say, what are their interests? And then we have to look at resources and staffing and things like that. So again, the bike committee, maybe what they would like to look at and then that could maybe become a goal. Goal eight, this, Goal eight as recommending moving this goal to the police department. That was about when we had our one traffic officer who has been working through town. That's not that it's not happening, not going to be happening, it's just that he would be, that goal would be incorporated into the police department's individual goals. Goal four on, Goal number nine?
New topic.
Oh, new topic, I'm sorry. New topic for consideration. This would be to appoint a committee to review the sidewalk ordinance. This is again, something that we have heard quite a bit about over the years. We've talked about it a little bit at the council level. Our sidewalk ordinance has not been looked at in a long, long time. It's a very complicated procedure sidewalks about who fixes them, who pays for them. There's a lot that can be studied about it. I thought that if something that would be in interest of having the committee really look at the sidewalk ordinance, there's probably other things that can be included in not just looking at the ordinance. The other things could fit in there too and almost come up with a committee that takes maybe just sidewalks, maybe it doesn't have to be sidewalk ordinance, it's sidewalks. And wanted, they could come back with recommending what their goal would be and something they could recommend reviewing the ordinance, looking at different sidewalks. They could have a whole large charge. They could work on what the charge would actually be. And maybe, like I said, not have it review the town sidewalk ordinance, just review sidewalks in town instead, have it more general. And maybe one of the things that they could do was review the ordinance and come up with different suggestions. And some of the other things that were on your topic one could probably even fit in there.
So they possibly look at grants, look at ordinance, look at the whole town itself?
Yep, the grants like we have had, there's Main Street grants, there's the steep grants, there's some of them, they're not there right now, but that could be something, again, when you guys, when they come up with the charge, it could be, you know, to review the ordinance, to look at and apply for grants. It could be, and have a whole list of different things. Page five, Goal 10.
Nine-year, deleting.
Oh, nine, I'm sorry, yeah, that was, again, that's a sidewalk goal, that was done. Goal, page five, delete Goal 10, that's been complete. That's the plan of conservation and development. In the middle and the deliverables, I said modify deliverable 2.7. The deliverable changed from a five to a six-year plan. That was something that we just recently have done. And then on, four, seven?
Seven.
Seven, I'm sorry, Goal 10, seven-year. Seven-year plan. And then on number, Goal 11 would be modify that goal. It's not to begin the construction of the water pollution control, it's to continue to monitor it. So that's just a modification. Page six, Goal 12, I recommend that we appoint an ad hoc committee on, about the Farmington Cemetery to work with the cemetery committee about what we want to do with the cemetery and if we're going to buy land or how we're going to deal with that issue. So that would be a committee on that. There's a lot of legwork that's been done on that, so it would just really be a committee to make recommendations to the council about what the next steps would be on that. Six, 12A, no change on that. As you know, we own Fisher Farm and we like to report on the happenings of subedge down there on a yearly basis. Page seven, new deliverable, nope, I'm sorry, no change on.
I don't know what EDC.
Oh, yeah, okay, I'm sorry. So page seven, we start on EDC. So in deliverable 3.1, I put a new deliverable which came from topic one off your sheet, and that is to work with the planning department and the town planning and zoning commission to attract housing developments, will enhance the quality of life and will appeal to young professionals. I thought that was a good place to fit that in, so that would go right there. And then on Goal 13, there would be no change to that. We still would meet on a, I think we're on a, we'd meet with UConn with the subcommittee and just keep up to speed on what's going up at the, on at the health center. Goal 14, I don't recommend any change for that. And a new deliverable on 3.5, it would be to develop strategies that encourage people passing through to stop at local businesses and activities. And that came from your topic one, and I thought that could fit in there. And then Goal 15, I would take that and that's something that we're continuing to work on, but I think we could move that to the economic development goals. And then just if I quickly take a look here and to see, but Edward, we could work on it about what you were saying about the local tourism here. So that would, that could probably be fit in one of these deliverables. And then if it went into one of the deliverables, then maybe the EDC could have, Rose could have a specific goal on it. Or you could put it here as a goal, whatever you guys decided. But we could, I could work on that for our, you know, figure out where we could place it. But I think it definitely could go right in here without any problem.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Page nine, 16 is no change, that's our budget process. Goal 17 is about the negotiations with the unions. I did want to just again, point out again, this is our work plan and just, we talked about the high deductible health plan. And when we work on this goal a little bit more, is that doing that, again, that the workload, it is up because we do have all of our unions, which we talked about, that we're negotiating. So this is a big goal with a lot of staff time on it. Page 10, Goal 18, no change. Oh, we're on the budget, so our new goal, this is our budget goal. Goal 18, no change. Goal 19, that we finished that, that was the revale, so I would delete that. And Goal 20, I recommend no change to that. We're now in best practices on page 11. I modified, made a suggestion for outcome 5.1 to include topic quality of life. This change is shown on pages 11 through 13. So this desired outcome, I just changed it and added some of the things that were on what, Patty, what you had written and put it there to fit in. what Patty, what you had written, and put it there to fit in. Goal 21 is no change, 22 is no change, and goal number 23 is basically done, there's just a few little things that the fire department's still doing, so I suggested that we move that to the fire department goals. On page 12, I had two things I wanted to talk about a little bit with, about the fire department. One of them is, as you guys all know, is that we're primarily a volunteer workforce, and talking with our new director, Steve, he has been talking about that we really should be doing a real push to be recruiting volunteers. And, you know, being a volunteer firefighter is a lot of hard work, it's a volunteer position, it's a lot of time, and in a lot of our departments, we're constantly trying to get members, and he feels that this is an initiative that the fire department should be taking on, and actively looking at different ways about how to recruit and retain our volunteer workforce. So I think that would be an important thing that the council should be monitoring and we should be looking at, because again, it's getting harder and harder for everyone, people volunteer systems, especially fire departments, the training is tremendous, what they have to do to train, and, you know, they're a great group of people, but we have to continue to try to figure out ways that we don't burn out our firefighters, and the different calls, most of the calls now, a lot will not, yeah, I would say the majority of calls are medical type of calls, they're not fighting fires, the skill level of the people that they need are very high. So I think that's just a new goal that I think we should be looking at. And also to go with that is, we've been talking about our fire stations, you know, we have five fire stations, about replacement, relocation, we've done, we've had a consultant come in and look at it, we've had someone else come in and look at, you know, various things that they're going out to bid right now, about calls, where the calls are, different things. And again, this all goes to being able to keep a volunteer system, and also the conditions of our fire stations, and we're getting very close to having possibly a building committee for fire stations renovations, it's been on our budget document to talk about that. But before we do that, I think that a full study of our whole system, and that's what Steve's been working on, so to keep the council up to speed on that, I think that that should be a new goal. The next one is a new goal, a topic for consideration, that would be to appoint an ad hoc committee to review the auditor selection. That was something Patty, we had talked about at the couple of meetings ago, and that would be something, again, that would have to happen relatively quickly, because to getting ready for the RFP, so we're on time for the next time around. So this would not be, I don't think, this would only take, it would be a short period of time where the committee would meet. A new goal with the police department, one of the things we touched on a little bit in the budget document, but just how crucial the role of our police department with the school systems. And I think we should have a goal here that talks about, which happens now, but the collaboration between the superintendent and the school, to provide a comprehensive and focused policing services to Farmington school system to address safety and security in and around the school system. It's, you know, you guys have seen what's going on with the different towns, and we are doing some restructuring in our own police department, so that we're able to not just support with the schools, with securities, it's with businesses, it's with town buildings. It's really a very much a topic that takes a lot of time, and it's really a shift of what the police department was spending their time on in years past. And so I think that's something that should be highlighted, and the chief, and Kathy Greeter, and the chief staff, they work now, it's a tremendous amount of time, and the rules and different regulations that they have to, schools have to provide. So I think this should be a new goal for the police department. Goal 12, it was about the webpage committee, that was complete. On page 13, and this is, I think, some of the things that we talked about earlier that could be considered as part of the charge, is that I put appointed town council ad hoc committee to improve communication and transparency within the community. And that goal, you know, the charge could include various things, and I think what we talked about here is that, you know, whether it's communication with the traffic, or communication in different social media, all of those things I think need to be studied, because, you know, again, I think everything, we can do most of everything, but I think we just have to look at it as an overall package, and how much the resources is, are, and what we have to do. But I think a lot of what we've talked about just earlier today could probably be incorporated in some type of goal and a charge here. Goal 25 is existing, no change. Goal 26, that was, that would be to appoint our two ad hoc committees, which we just did. This goal would just need to be modified a little bit, that would say that we're appointing the two committees, that we did that, and to complete their charge. So that would be that. And then I put on the desired outcomes on page 13, and I got this from your topic five, education, I thought that could fit there, is to stay abreast of current education treads and creating facilities that support the board of education and students, allowing them to maintain the top-notch education that Farmington is known for. So I thought that could go there, if that was, and then we, and then I moved the ad hoc committees to match up with that. Page 14, delete goal 27, and instead put a new goal per Nancy Parent, our social service department. This is something that, again, they're working hard on, and it again, has to do with some about information and communication, but develop innovative efforts to disseminate information using technology, a virtual information bulletin board programming, and announcements to educate and inform the public on pertinent topics such as opioid information, caregiver information, and other timely subjects. So something that Nancy feels that her department is going to be working on, and it's, again, I put that as a goal. And then goal number 5.8, that came out of your topic one, and also I read that in the green minutes, and so I just modified that. And then also, what I talked about before is about reviewing the charge of the committee for the green efforts, and seeing what they want to focus their attention on. Goal, now we're in recreation, goal six, at page 15, there was two additions that we'd add, community, into community programs, both in 6.1 and also in the heading of the recreation goal as a whole. And then one of the things that Nancy and our department have been working on, but is increase efforts to provide enhanced community events to target all populations, to further our community sense of place, and strengthen our community connections. So these are things like, that they have at concerts at the green, or at the library, the egg hunt, various things like that, but really to spend resources and time increasing those efforts to do those types of things. And then goal 29, 30 through 34, has all been completed. I did want to comment just one thing about one of the speakers that did speak about Westwood's golf course. The town, two years ago, did a comprehensive study on Westwood's golf course when they did the recreation department, so it was studied, the funding sources were changed, it was all part of the recreation, so the golf course was studied at that time. So just wanted to make clarification on that.
The last point Kathy, on the golf course, we've got to study available on the town website.
Yep, we have, it's not on the website, I don't think, but we have the old study, it was a few years ago, so we can bring back, it was, it was all part of what, how we, how we were going to fund recreation, the golf course, a committee was established, and one of the topics that they did talk about was the recreation, so I can talk to Nancy, and I can put a packet together for you with all the backup information on it.
Thank you.
So.
16. Did I miss it?
I think I hit them all.
You just said that you deleted it all, I didn't know if you had any other comments.
No, no, just. So based on what I put here, this is kind of just a summary of. So, there would be committees, there's an existing bike committee and a green committee, and what I've been, what I recommended in this is that they actually are looking for reviewing the charge and having some specific outcomes that would have to be included in the goals. The Farmington Center Committee would be creating the charge, and we talked about that. Historical properties, do we need a committee, if so, creating a charge, or possibly maybe that can fit into some of the other things we talked about. The cemetery would be creating the charge and setting up an ad hoc committee. The auditor committee would be creating a charge and getting that set up. A sidewalk committee, updating recommendations for ordinance changes, or other things that we talked about. Communication and transparency, which I think sounds like that would be a large goal and a charge that we need to really work on. And then the two ad hoc committees for the high school, and for, for the survey, and for the financial. So that's what's pretty much in this, and also trying to include most of your topics that kind of fit into the plan.
So this is in, two committees we already have, it's an extension of one, two, are you suggesting a committee for communication transparency, you are right?
Yeah.
Ad hoc committee?
Yeah.
Comments, questions? This is eight new committees, basically. We have two existing.
Bruce?
Thank you Kathy, this was a great summary going through everything, and I liked the one sheet of, kind of like summarize everything. This is not in any particular order, if you were to kind of say what you think from a town manager's perspective, what you would recommend from a priority?
No, it's not, I could tell you just quickly off the top of my head, I think that what we've talked about, I think that the Farmington Center Committee would be something that is a priority, that's my feeling about it. I would say that the two high school committees, we just set up the committee, that they're, again, large committees, large workload that are going to continue on. And then just by comments, and what I've heard, and what I thought, the things, I think that communication and transparency committee, and setting up some different things about that, would be probably, I would say, is the three types of things, I've heard that I would say, or thought would probably rise to the top of the list.
So knowing, as Nancy had mentioned, there's eight new committees, is that, I'm just trying to understand the workload from the staff perspective, as well as the volunteers up here, is that typically normal, that we would have eight new committees? Like what's the average that the town tends to work on in a given year, or given two years? I'm just curious, like the workload.
I mean, again, we have other committees too, like, you know, your responsibilities, the land acquisition, and some other ones that are, that are still around. Usually, I mean, like again, we had a high school committee for the last 18 months, so that committee was always on there. And then the commit, council has done, I think, smaller types of ad hoc committees that aren't, like, you know, like the auditor committee, or, you know, some different ones that aren't as large of committees. So in general, I would say that these three large committees, especially a gateway committee, and a Farmington High School Committee, and a communication ones with the things that we want to vet, is pretty, is a pretty aggressive agenda. It's a pretty aggressive agenda.
Aggressive for a two-year period, or aggressive just?
I, I think that with, I think if you had those and not had so many other committees, I think for, you know, I think, I think it's going to definitely be two, like, two years because of the gateway, there's a lot that comes with that, and the high school is going to be a long time project. I'm not too sure about the communication ones, depending on what comes out of that, but there is some different things that could come. So I think that probably close to two years.
Okay, and the reason why I'm asking all these questions, just so everyone knows, is I, you know, I want to make sure that we hit the right items, as well as making sure that they're obtainable. You know, I don't want our town to not succeed, I want us to succeed. And what would that be, in terms of an impact from the town services, if we don't do some of these things? And I think that's important for me, at least a councilman, to understand when we start prioritizing some of these items here, and how we can accomplish this, and what does that really mean?
I think something we have to do, the next step, is to go through, think about all of the suggestions that everybody's made, and what we have here, and is there anything else? And secondly, is to prioritize, we have to think about what we think is most important. Certainly, the bike committee and the green committee are already, already have their committees formed, so that's a matter of them meeting and going through their charge, and coming to us with their thoughts of what next. But the rest of it, and I totally, I think the Farmington Center Committee is an immediate, we get that together, because within 30 days, we're going to be, it's done, and it's, we don't know when the state's going to be coming and asking us for our comments and our, and our thoughts and decision about what we're going to do with the property. That's immediate. The others, of course, we've already done, the Farmington High School ad hocs, and that's then if we choose to do the communication right now. But we really need to think about setting priority, and I think that's something that when you look at all these committees, you have to understand, we already have, as Kathy said, the committees we're on right now, plus, if we had all these committees, that's another meeting or two for these committees, and I think my concern is, if we have too many committees and too much going on, what we really want to concentrate on is going to get diluted, and we're not going to do a good job on the ones that we think are most immediate. So I would, I think we need to think about that, what's, what are our most immediate needs, and some of the things I think can be, it's not that we don't, we may include them on our, on our, as a goal, but it's not a priority right now. In the past, we've actually prioritized like one, two, and three, I think, and, and as they get accomplished, they go up, or we look and say, okay, we've done that sooner than we thought we could, so now we're going to move another one forward, or we can address one now, because we see that the staff and our own time is, we have it available. But I don't want to put at risk anything that we think is so important for our group as a town council, but also the staff. I mean, the staff is doing their work every day, too. So to add the committees, and too many, is just asking them to do, to spread themselves too thin, in my, is my opinion. And I think we need to realize they're doing their everyday job, then we have the committees that need to, that are offshoots of these things, and then, so I think we need to take all that into consideration, and think about how to prioritize. And Kathy can give us information also, not only about the time, but the money. What are the different, we have so much money in our, to allocate for different, different needs, and I think that's something we need to also keep in mind as we go through this and ask what it's going to cost, the time and the dollars, so, just some of my thoughts as we go through this process. Patty?
I, first, I would say, I agree Nancy, that we need to prioritize. Frankly, as we were going through it, I started keeping a running list of how many new committees were proposed, and all I can think was, well, I already served as a chair of two, and then the liaison for two more, and who knows what else is coming. So I do think these are important issues, but I think prioritizing them will help us be the most effective in what we choose to do. My fear is that it hit the surface, you don't really necessarily get into what the real issue is, so I'd like to see, we have some work to do to figure out where the priorities are, and insights and input that you, Kathy, have, and the rest of the staff would be helpful. Two other comments, one is, it's not in here, but we talked about it a lot during the process, town infrastructure, and what the needs are, and what the buildings need, and what's the capital plan, it's part of the capital improvement plan of changes to the buildings. I'd like to see potentially some sort of facilities review of what, again, there could potentially be another committee, so, you know, it's a priority that we, something to think about, but what's a review of all of the town buildings, so that way it makes it easier, my understanding is part of, and this goes to my second point, my understanding of the strategic plan is that it's to help guide us too, as part of the budget process, in terms of understanding what the priorities are, which, where the money should be spent as we're preparing budgets. So I think having a review of the facilities would assist us in evaluating those issues come next to the budget.
Other thoughts, comments? CJ?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with, I think, what a lot of you guys are saying in terms of trying to prioritize these. Just because we don't necessarily make eight right now this year, I think we can still move forward on some of this, like the auditor committee as an example. I think we can still make a way as a council. We had talked about that a couple of months ago. If we were not to have a committee for that, doesn't mean we can't necessarily talk about it and take action on that. Some of these things I do think are more appropriate, you know, to have committees, like we had said. I, to Patty's point, not to add another committee, but facilities review committee is something that takes a holistic look at our infrastructure as a town, something I know I've been, you know, for a while, so I'd certainly be open to that. Kathy would like that, yeah?
I'm sorry. I was just going to just comment, and one of the things that I think that we just have to track back is that, again, a lot of the stuff is, we can, absolutely can do it, but it's really where the priority of the time, of the person's going to be, you know? So the same person that's tracking the state, which is a nightmare, is the same person that's doing the capital facility report, that's putting all that together. The same person that's going up to the school to communicate and do the security of that and the staff is the same person that's tracking down the state for the traffic, but when they didn't do that, the different things. The person that's designing to make sure they're following the state's design, because they don't do the design correctly and doing that, is the same person that's doing the other thing. And so it's, that's where the problem becomes, is that it's more about, anything can be accomplished, it's the people that actually have to do those types of things and where their time is going to be spent. And again, even, again, with the communication, which seems, which I agree, a lot of it is a high priority, but all of those different things which we vet is taking people away from doing what their other things are, and that could be very much, that's the priority. But then they have, we have to look at the goals as a whole, that if communications are top thing, that we have to do this, they have to do that, then that person's not tracking the state, or they're not doing this, or they're not doing something else, you know? And that, it's not a fine line, you know? I'm just trying to just say in general, we just have to, things that are codified, things we have, you know, we only have one, we just, again, which we're very grateful, we just got a new computer person, so we, you know, we only have one computer person. The whole social media thing of how that works in a public sector and how you get information out and who's tracking it and who's responding, and someone like Erica, who maybe would be the person that would handle some of that social media aspect of it, we have five union contracts that we have to settle, and five union contracts, that is, you know, 70% of our budget. So Erica's time should be doing research and data and getting ready and doing HSAs about, and because a media person or just that, some of that stuff has to be a high level person, because it has to be, make sure you're following with the message that we want to get out. So again, when you're thinking about all this stuff, I think that you have to just comprehend what, again, the, if we're, you know, changing up in some things with the green, which I think are really great ideas, but also that we have the environmental MS, MSP?
MS4.
MS4, which is a top priority that we're doing. So Shannon's doing MS4, but if we have another project for her to do that, it's, we just don't have the people. We just don't have the people. So I just want everyone, when we really look at that, we really focus, and you guys, my experience, having all these committees for all you, is not going to, you're going to, it's not going to be great. You're not, it's, the success rate is just too much. It's too much.
And some of the things I think that we mentioned, one, I'm going to refer to the auditor committee, when you did bring that up, Patty, and one of the things that was discussed right here was saying, okay, this year, what we'll look in right now, what we can do is kind of a compromise at the minute, rather than do a committee to vet that whole process and find a new, or look into other auditors, was that we would have a different person come this year. So that, that kind of is, we know something different, it'd be a little different. It's not the whole process of doing an RFP and going out, but it's actually kind of a compromise with a little bit of a change, with let's see someone different sitting at the table and looking at our information. So that in itself, but that doesn't take a whole committee and it doesn't take our staff. And the communication, maybe some of this is, maybe some of the pieces, and we can look to Kathy to this, are some things that we can begin the process of without having a full-fledged committee about, maybe, and I don't know which ones, but I just, the auditor one was something I'm thinking about. It's not that nothing will be done, but it's just that it's not a whole committee from our standpoint and from Kathy's, so that the town staff actually has to meet twice a week on a committee and, you know, as well as our volunteer group sitting right at this table. So there may be some things that we can look into, maybe the historic properties, maybe that's part of the Farmington Center Committee, that we become, you know, that that's a piece of that. I know historic's certainly different, and we all value that, and that's one of the things that Farmington is so well-known for and is one of our highlights, but maybe that's something under the, I don't, and then it evolves into something else. So I think there are ways we can think about this without really just taxing everyone, not just the council, but all of Kathy's staff. And as you've mentioned, there are things like the negotiation, all those pieces take so much time, so.
Right. And I, but I do think that a couple of things, and again, what perception is and what reality is and what people have an understanding of, is that I think that the whole thing about communication and transparency, I think that it would behoove us all, like, and again, I'm not that, that a committee, because as you guys know, are all good efforts really of how you can communicate and how you can do it. You know, it's not an easy task, because people really, a lot of times, don't have interest until it's in their backyard. And, you know, how, I think it would be good to vet it in a committee to show that, you know, we do try our best about communication and that we're unopen to other things about communication, but maybe a disconnect about saying, you know, you hear people talking about communication, about the state road project, where we've had 25 public hearings on it, we've had this, and because people don't know about it, doesn't necessarily mean we didn't communicate about it. And, you know, and so I think there's a little bit of a disconnect that if we can have some sort of what, what is the expectation of communication on some of this? And then the committee can vet some of this and what it takes to get that, you know? And when you have a Hartford Current that doesn't post anything, you know, we could hire a media specialist at $250,000 a year to try to help us, and I'm not sure that we'd still get someone that would say, I didn't know about this was going on, because people have busy lives and they're just, you know, it's just, it's hard to get our message out, no matter what we try. So I think that, I feel that there's some sort of a disconnect about what the expectation is and that we should be really firming that up so we know how we want to communicate and what we expect, what we expect on the webpage, what we expect on, and how, what it takes to do that, what it takes to do that.
Comments? CJ?
First, I want to make clear that we're not hiring a media specialist for this. Please do not send in your resume. For these committees, I mean, you gave us a list of 10 committees that went through what we saw. I think it would be good to point out, because we're all on a number of committees, we understand that this is a volunteer deal that we're doing here. The Farmington Center Committee, for instance, we're talking about a committee that would be meeting for a few months before we can finish this. Is that, are we talking about the early stages?
I see this as being like phase one, two, and three. You know, I see, you know, a couple of years.
Okay. So on something like this, if we're creating a charge, though, we could certainly create a charge of a committee for reviewing the purchase of that property from the state and have a smaller chunk of that. The long-term project is going to be, as you're saying, potentially three, four, whatever long-term project. But if we took a small piece of that, that's manageable. If we were sitting around here and someone said, okay, a committee that's going to be a few months, that's fine, and then review again and see what the next step is. If we decided we didn't want the property, that kind of limits what future meetings are. So that would be something where you could have a shorter term, not a lot of meetings, not a huge commitment from anyone who's on that meeting for a shorter-term piece. The cemetery, you recommended creating an ad hoc committee on that one. Has that been mostly handled by staff up to this point?
Right. What the issue is with that is that, you know, you have to make a decision now. There's no, right now, the situation is there's no property that's there. So the council policy decision has to be made of how do you want another cemetery in town, and how do you want to get another cemetery in town? Do you want to purchase one? There's nothing, the state property, and again, we can go back and look at the state property that we were interested in, but there's no property available, or it's town property, and that's a policy decision of the council, whether you want to change a piece of property, that's an open space piece of property, into a cemetery.
Okay. But there again, a smaller chunk on that one is just making the decision and as a council saying, what is our policy going to be? It could be a shorter-term committee where we say, we're trying to decide, do we want a town cemetery? Do we want to purchase this property?
Yeah. But I just want to caution you, again, some of these, why there's so many committees, is because there are policy changes or shifts in policy or review of policy that has been longstanding doing things. And again, going back to transparency and communication, you're not going to, how are you all going to decide about a cemetery? You have to communicate, you have to get it out to the public, you have to have meetings, you have to have this. That's not going to take place in two months. It's, that's a long, that's a process that has to take place. So all of these that, like I'm saying, not the auditor one, that's different, that's a simple type of committee, but like, whether or not we're going to purchase a cemetery and give up a piece of property in town for a cemetery, buy-in, is this the right decision? Do people are aware of it? How do you get people to communicate that? Even the Parsons, again, about how are we going to buy it? How are we going to make, decide about that? You're talking about a short period of time, over summer months, are you going to have workshops? Are you going to, how are we going to get that information out? This is, this is going to be driven by a lot of participation, if that's where we're going, because these are all new types of things. Sidewalks, that may not have to take it, that may not have to be instantaneous, but still, it's a huge change of different policies. You know, we have problems with our sidewalks, and, you know, on Main Street, for instance, you know, the residents are supposed to take care of those sidewalks. If now, but the problem is, there's huge trees on those sidewalks. A lot of those residents, if you replace those sidewalks, those trees are not going to live. How are we going to deal with those side, what are we going to do with the nice historic trees that come down? Are we going to pay for sidewalks? Are we not going to pay for sidewalks? So these are big policy decisions that are going to take a lot of time.
So I just want to, and I don't want to speak for CJ, but I think what I was hearing from CJ, it's almost like it would be nice, and I don't know if it's possible, to size it like a T-shirt size, small, medium, and large, of how big do we think that some of these committees would be? Because that might help, because like, the auditor may be a small, may even be an extra small. Who knows?
I used one, two, and three. Now we're going.
Yeah. Well, it's, you know, we're prioritizing, but some of these committees may be simple.
Right.
And I'm using T-shirt sizes as a way of identifying that, because we really don't know until you start getting into it.
Right. Exactly. But I'll just give you an example just about the auditors, because everything kind of intertwines. So the auditors is relatively a simple committee, but it has to be done kind of now to start getting ready for when you have to appoint auditors. So in here, I see stuff about the budget document, about making, maybe making changes to the document. And also, you're talking about HSAs and about maybe going out to bid for an HSA, and if we're going to do that with a contract. The same person is on every one of those. So again, the auditor by itself really is probably not that large of a committee, but as you know, it's a public sector. Agendas go out, everything, it's a process. And that person that maybe is updating the budget and we're talking about all that, and that has to be ready to go for the next budget cycle, is the same person. And the HSAs, which we're in, we're in collective bargaining right now, is the same person, too. So again, just kind of, I know what we're all trying to do, but everything is sort of intertwined about the people, you know? And until we kind of, I think, look at it and say, what is the top?
Priority.
Small, large, medium, and then we can say, okay, well, of those three, which one is more important to you? Go out for bid for HSA people, look at changing up our budget document to certain ways, or doing the auditor?
So I'm just going to add a little bit, because I know I said T-shirt size, and I really do mean that. So priority is still one through 10, for instance. Out of one through 10, what is the complexity? Because now you're talking about complexities. Complexity could mean resources. You don't have enough resources. But also, the T-shirt size could say the amount of work that you have to do. And I know, it just makes it helpful for me to understand, you know, is it really the top three that we should be focusing on? Because maybe there's that fourth that is a low complexity and small T-shirt that we can probably accomplish, because it's not that complex and it's not that big. I'm assuming that you and your staff could probably help identify some of those things if we think, and I don't know if the council agrees with that, to help us prioritize with you on some of that stuff. And I don't want to create a huge project on the staff just to do that, but.
Right. No, I mean, I think that would be helpful for everyone. I mean, I could just do it in general terms, but just still understanding, that's the first layer, because then there's, if you pick, you know, again, just what the staffing is, if you have a lot of finance types of things, then you may have to, again, prioritize those. Like, each one may not be that complex, but if you have all three of them, that's going to have to take us to resource issues. If we have this, then that may take us, you know, to, like, facilities. Doing a Farmington High School facility and having the town staff and everyone be a part of this, with Russ being a part of it, my staff being a part of it, us focusing our attention on that, when then also looking at a huge facilities of all our own town facilities and putting that all back together, the resources just aren't there. They're just not there.
Well, that's part of what I think we need to hear and what we're hearing from you. How much does that take manpower-wise, man and woman power-wise, and how much does it take money-wise? And because those things, that's when we have to prioritize and say, you know, we're going to give this up for right now, this is our third, number three, when we really want number one. This is number one. And that's what we've done in the past. These have had numbers, and we put them in, but then we prioritize so that Kathy knows what our main goals are, you know? These are the three top things that we believe you need to address. And after hearing what it costs and what the timeframe is from your staff. So that's, I think, the next step. I mean, you've given us some of that now, and because that's where the give and take has to come from the council. We can't have everything, in my opinion, or nothing will get done well, so.
So I thought we were looking at three things. I know you were talking about T-shirt size, priorities, and then kind of size, complexity, timeframe. So like you were saying, maybe this doesn't need to be immediate and have to look at where they're going to hit and where we have time constraints, like maybe cemetery and auditor, because that's a fit into a certain timeframe, and there are others, but, and then the overlap with staff, I think, is what you're saying, is how's that, what are the key staff and how's that going to play on? And then money, resources, in terms of if it's going to be something that hit the budget, then we have to consider that, too. So really, then, it becomes five things. That would be helpful.
Yeah. Sounds good. Other comments or thoughts from everybody about? Kathy?
Next steps. Next, I was going to say next steps. I don't want to rush you, though.
No.
What we could, the, what I would say is that the next step would be what you guys have said, kind of the five topics for each one of these things. But again, are we ready to start cleaning up this document if we're going to start making progress, meaning that the things that are deleted, I could delete out of it and start getting a next draft of this document so that we can start focusing on the priorities and looking at the document as not with everything all in it, just these are the, these are the things that are there, this is the modifications, this is how it looks right now, and then have another chart next to it that says complexity, staffing, you know, budget, high, low, you know, that type of thing.
So I think the first question is the things that were deleted as we went through, do you need any other information on, or do we, do we just say, fine, and then those will be gone after this? What Kathy will bring us is a new document, hopefully edited, but I think that's the easiest edit to begin with. And can we give her that? Can we give her that direction at this point?
Ma'am, if you're just trying to get consensus, I'm good with all the deletions. I didn't see anything that I felt needed to stay on here for just the deletions for the first question.
Okay. Bruce.
And I would agree with the same thing. And also, I guess, because we have the original document, if, if we feel that we needed some clarification, obviously, we could always bring it back if we needed to. But from a consensus, I would say yes to start something a little.
Just to get off the dime here?
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay. So, I have consensus to get. The red is gone.
Yes.
Okay. Now, when I look at the four colors, the next one I would think is if you, we can, this is all for discussion, but the purple of no change. Were you, do you think you had an idea, enough of an idea to make a comment or?
I'd say, because there's no change, I'd say you keep that on.
Just leave them alone.
And then when you prioritize it, if there's something you want to take it off, when you do the, I'll, I'll continue to, I'll do the five.
They stay right there.
Yeah.
Okay. So, is everyone, are we?
I would agree.
I just had one comment.
Okay.
I agree, but on page nine, goal 17.
Hold on. Hold on. Yes.
It says no change, but then it also says explore the high deductible health plan option.
Yeah, it's more like an addition. Okay.
Other than that, I have no.
Okay. But you're good with that one?
Yes.
Being on the people part of it.
Okay. Good.
Okay. So, we have two colors, Kathy, that are now dealt with. The green or the blue? Any specific comments or would you like, they stay green and blue and you give us modifications? I mean, give us those, identify the costs, the time?
I think just to keep track for simple purposes, we just keep the blue and the green and I just rate them, as we've discussed, and then just so we don't get confused on what I wrote, what was in there before for the modifications.
Okay.
Because that's easy at the end, we can just change the color back.
Right. Right. Because then we will see the whole document with the existing.
Right.
Items and the newer items. And then we'll have to prioritize that as a whole.
Right.
Does that sound like a plan?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, so, this would go out?
Thursday.
Thursday. I can probably have the document, but if, probably to get all that, the backup for all of that, I'll try to get it to you as soon as possible, so you don't have it just on Tuesday night. But I would ask that, I'm probably not going to be able to put all those different, the five topics for each one and to get that. So, I'll work on it to try to get it to you before the weekend, if not, you know, most of it. When I'm done with it, I'll send it to you, so you guys have it. And then for Tuesday night, you'll have the, I'll leave stuff at your places, if that works for everyone.
And, well, what if we have the, the document itself?
Yep.
Modified, that we just talked.
Yeah.
And then those identifications as of dollars and all that? That's the second piece that could come to us Friday or Monday.
Exactly.
Is that agreeable with everybody?
Monday is a hard day.
Oh, gee. It's really tight.
Okay. I'll do my best.
But you let us know what you.
Yeah. I mean, again, it's really, it's not that, it's not that difficult, really, because I don't know exact prices or whatever, you know, things. I'm just going to just high, low, medium.
It's more ballpark.
You know, just so we could get an idea, you know, of where we're at.
Yeah. And I kind of envision this as we go through it as a council and talk to you about it, it may change. So, I, I think, like Nancy, it's the best ballpark that you can put in there that, that would help.
Yep. Because we certainly rely, you're the experienced one with the time, you know what that's going to take, some of these will take, and what they all will take.
Yeah.
So, you give us your best guess of time and, you know? And we know that one of the things that's important, we talked about before, was that the document that we're, we're looking at in the strategic plan, it is a moving document. I mean, we, we do set the plan and so that we can move forward with this and we're not going willy-nilly with different kinds of things coming in from everyone or all directions. Kathy has a plan to move forward with. But we know that in the future, if something were to come up and we needed to do something, it doesn't preclude us from doing that. So, we shouldn't feel that hemmed in, that if there's something we need, we can, we will discuss it right at the table. But this is an important document to guide and give direction for the town, for Kathy and all of us, to keep focused.
Yep. And it's not unusual, and the council has done it before for many, many years, when there's new topics that come on, it takes a while to codify what the topic's going to be, what the charge is going to be, and before that happens. And that's what a lot of these goals are. It's new topics, and so, they have to be vetted. And it takes time to vet them and then come up with the charge. And then when those charges keep on going with the different phases, then the goals are easier, because then it just moves along. It's to complete phase two. We already know what the, you know, what the overall topic is and where you, what the policy direction is. So, on some of these, we have, we have to do that. And a lot of these goals took, you know, they take, you know, it has to be studied. It has to be studied.
And that's the difference too. Some of them have to be studied, as you said, which will take time, and some have to be immediate, like Route 4. And finding out in two months, are we going to buy it or not and what are, what are our interests? So, those are very different kinds of goals to address. Okay. Our next step is to per executive session.
Sure. Madam Chair, I move to executive session to discuss matters concerning a sale or acquisition of real estate property. Attendance, attendance to the executive session shall be limited to the members of the town council, town manager, and Bill Wasworth, as the land acquisition member.
Second.
And I'm going to recuse myself for various reasons.
Good. So, you're welcome.[1757.13]